He's like really looks smart. He's not like me. He does nothing to speak up. And he's straight. And he doesn't have to worry about things. My sister was like that. She did nothing to work very hard.
Yeah.
I had to work really hard.
Yeah.
I did not do well in my meetings. You got it. Yeah. Now, I think my daughter's going to be like, she'll have to work for it. Which I think, he'll be fine.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you.
But then they boss into the.
All trail.
All trail.
Who wasn't like that? I will say some amount of this point. We're not too late. As the.
So he's just.
And he really got into it in summer.
I'm not taking debate.
He has to get better. He didn't believe me, but it's gotten a lot better.
Well, if it stays.
He sees him. He likes him. So he's going to be playing until they come up again next spring. He's going to play for senior year.
Right, right. It's not over yet. For this week.
Well, I guess we're on. Just to get forward.
I mean, in a positive case, tonight we can't be. I think after this meeting, we should go talk.
Okay.
An hour. She said who's the rose. Thank you.
Yes.
And my. We could still meet. I mean, right now, I'm saying all of my spirit number.
Testing, one, two. Test one, two, three.
Oh, shucks.
The people already know us. Yeah, probably. We could still meet. I mean, right now, I'm saying all of my spirit number.
Testing, one, two. Test one, two, three.
Oh, shucks.
The people already know us. Yeah, probably.
Testing, one, two. Test one, two, three.
Right here. Does Chrissy want to say?
Is that what it is? Ms. Hamel wants to vote?
Do I come up here?
I don't know. I can begin with two councillors here, sir.
Oh, here's third.
Thank you. All right. Are we not having a fifth person? Because I'm going to move this.
I guess not.
Actually get to the table.
You can move it if you like.
Hi, are you okay?
Yes.
Really? All right, good evening. Like to welcome everybody to this work session of the city council focusing on infrastructure and capital projects.
Mr. Murphy, just a second. We need to modify the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
So, this is for the later part, right? So I'm just, we're just saying that council plans to convene for those who are able to in a closed session following this meeting.
Right.
To amend the agenda, and we have to vote on that.
Yes.
Would you? I know you can't attend vote.
I don't want to vote on that because I think our five votes should be at this meeting. So I'll say, I'll just vote no.
All right. So we can continue because we will have to once the.
Can proceed with this?
Yes.
We'll deal with that later. Okay. So, welcome again. Let me start by thanking some of our staff who've prepared the information for you all tonight. Chrissy Hamel from the finance department, Maya Kumazawa, and Ryan Davidson from the budget office. Assistant city manager Leslie Beauregard is here at the table. Kevin Roddy, our financial advisor, and Chris Cullen, the finance director, are here with me at the table. The purpose of tonight's session is really to get us started in the FY 2020 capital improvement program. And really allow staff to deliver a CIP that will bring council's priorities to fruition. And so, this document is meant to be the foundation, the building block for the process that will take us through the eventual budget approval in April of 2019. And there are a lot of choices to be made during budget season, as you know, and particularly on the capital side this year. And I think that one word that you'll hear us talk a lot about maybe tonight and throughout these next several months is about prioritizing. And really helping staff to realize your goals. So, you know, why is that prioritization necessary? You have a number of fiscal policies that we need to observe, and we're going to talk about many of them tonight. Most notably, you know, the debt ratio that you've approved in the past, and also our cash balance policy. In addition to a policy right now that transfers a certain amount of money to the schools whenever we have new revenues. So, in broad strokes, you know, we have a current five-year plan that calls for us to spend roughly $120 million over those five years. And we've had some community discussion about schools and affordable housing projects that would be maybe as much as another, twice that. And I don't mean going from 120 to 240. I mean, twice that plus the 120 that exists today, you know, close to a quarter billion dollars in new ideas. And that's in addition to projects that we have not funded in the last process just five months ago. So, those choices, that prioritization will get framed for you tonight in looking at what's in the existing CIP. And while you all certainly have a lot of choices to make, one thing that we've talked a lot about as a staff is that, you know, wherever we are, let's think about projects that may be reprioritized rather than kind of infrastructure and maintenance. You know, staff couldn't really recommend to you in good faith ideas like, let's stop paving roads or building sidewalks or things like that, and they are a big part of the CIP. You're going to hear about a lot of projects that you or previous councils have authorized, but that those funds haven't been issued yet. And maybe you might think about whether those projects need to continue to go forward. We have a number of things in the CIP that today get funded with cash. Nearly $20 million in investment already in affordable housing happens through cash funding. That's not bonded, what goes into the affordable housing fund and the current money going to the housing authority. So as we talk about some of these projects, you know, we have that ability to put out new bonds, as was talked a lot about last week during the affordable housing work session. But maybe there is a blending of many strategies, you know, reprioritizing projects, taking some of your cash and rededicating it, maybe bonding some amount in order to meet some of your objectives. So, we're hoping that we build the foundation for you tonight, set the stage for some prioritization, get some direction for the staff so that we know how to start building the CIP that you'll want, and there'll be lots of continued engagement with you and the community in the months ahead. So the rest of the presentation will be these folks working through the PowerPoint that we've provided. So, thank you.
I realize we're not making decisions, but just the thought of just giving through deficiency, the ability for three of us to be able to involve some things.
I think five of us should be talking about these things. I mean, but if I vote against it, you still have three votes. I'm just in the interest of trying to just hear from everyone. But we're not going to be hearing from everyone. So to hear from everyone, I thought that should be in a closed session, and closed sessions are always about buying land or about personnel. And so, five of us should be in the room for that.
Okay. So, I think that we now have the discussion.
Oh, I was explaining that to.
Okay. So I think we should wait. I think we should wait.
Should we have staff proceed? All right, go ahead, Leslie.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is our agenda, and Mr. Murphy had a great introduction. And again, one of our goals is, you know, eventually we'll have many, many meetings between now and March when the CIP is formally submitted as part of the budget document. And then you'll still have time after that through April to refine it. So we're going to have several discussions with you starting tonight. Tonight's kind of a broader stroke, and then as we get closer to actually getting the CIP finalized, so we'll get more specific and more specific, especially in light of some of the larger projects that you all have been talking about, which kind of changes significantly how we've funded these projects. So, we're going to walk you through that, and Chris and I are going to split the presentation up, and Kevin's here to interject and answer any questions you have. He's usually been at these meetings, particularly when we talk about affordability and debt service. So let me just, I'm going to quickly go through these next slides. So we have, we've come up with some different processes this capital, this capital budget cycle. So we actually started, oh, several months ago with an asset team that started looking at our capital assets, and how do we start prioritizing, how do we start taking care of those assets, the ones that we have now? And I'm going to show you a list a little bit later as to what those are. And then we're also redeveloping the capital projects viewer, and so that will have some more timely and engaging reporting, and when that gets rolled out, you all certainly know. I'll talk about decision-making criteria on the next slide, and then we're going to talk, show you what the CIP looks like in terms of maintaining existing assets, enhanced existing assets, and new. This is a new suggestion if council is interested in touring city assets. We have folks that can do that, so if there's some interest in that, we'd be more than happy to do that for you. We're also asking departments to prioritize what they're submitting, and then we have staff training and engagement through small group discussions. And what's not on here that came up fairly recently, it's a suggestion of a neighborhood leader, was asking neighborhoods to submit projects. So we don't really have a process for that fleshed out. We'd never really done that before. So we sent the neighborhood associations a very simple form to fill out, and they'll just be going to the budget office, and then we'll have departments review those. And so we'll kind of see how those play into the whole process. Next year, though, what I've suggested is we enhance that engagement process, whatever that looks like, and we start working on that after the budget is passed in April. And so, hopefully, we can expand on that next year, and we'll have a more engaged process with the neighborhoods going forward. In terms of the criteria, I won't talk about every single one of these, but you can see we have, we're asking departments to do quite a bit of alignment with the strategic plan, for instance, to look at legal mandates. So we're really trying to make sure projects kind of fit either in the strategic plan, or if they're legal mandated, what does that mean exactly? What are the operational costs? I mean, some of these things we've asked for, we currently ask for, some of these things we used to ask for, but we haven't in a while. But given the CIP and kind of the, where we think we're going with this, we thought it was really important to get departments to really hone in on these types of criteria to see kind of where these projects land going forward. And then also, we could show you and the community kind of where things are falling and how decisions are being made also. And I think it creates another level of transparency with the CIP process that is always a really good thing, of course, and it helps with the decision-making process in the long run. This is just our timeline. This is an internal timeline. Actually, on the last slide, or one of the last slides, you'll see where all the public work sessions and meetings coming up are. So sometime between the late October, early November, we'll have another work session that will focus on the capital improvement program as we get closer to presenting it at the planning commission in December. And then, of course, I think we have a couple of more work sessions and maybe a retreat in January. So we have several other times to talk about this and the budget in general. Okay. So, I wanted to just quickly show you a list of capital assets. These are just by categories. So we have a lot. I mean, they're all city-owned facilities or structures or infrastructure. So this is, these are significant lists, and all these things we have to take care of, all these things have a cost to maintain, to operate, to rebuild. And then we add things. We add sidewalks, and then those eventually have to be taken care of. So, you know, we just wanted to show this to you to say, we have a lot in our capital budget now that hopefully takes care of these needs.
And if I could add to that, just a few other statistics to put these in perspective. The book value of the city's assets is currently about $300 million. And that's from an accounting perspective. That's the original cost of acquiring it, less any depreciation. And obviously, we have some older assets which have been completely depreciated. But the real number, if you were to go out and replicate that same amount of infrastructure today, to build it from scratch, I say conservatively, is probably a billion dollars. If you look at all the numbers in terms of square footage of school facilities, general government facilities, fire stations, parks, those sorts of things, I think that's a pretty conservative number in terms of actually replicating that. The other thing is, the other number I want to provide is, based on my somewhat limited research, the oldest facility that I could find was Venable Elementary School, built in 1925. Now, obviously, it's been substantially rehabilitated and updated over time, but still, it's, the fundamental building structure and the location are still where they were almost 100 years ago. And so my point with those statistics is twofold. One is, the amount of money that we're talking, and it's sort of cumulative value over time. And then the second piece is time. That's one of the reasons why we do the CIP slightly differently than we do the general fund budget, which is an annual sort of exercise. You know, the CIP is five years in the length. We actually go out further with some of our internal projections, because infrastructure by its very nature is generational. It spans years into the future, and, you know, history is, across the country, you know, we can point to good infrastructure investments, like Venable, for example, we're still using it almost 100 years later. But also, when infrastructure doesn't go well, it can haunt a community for years, both in terms of its finances, but also its reputation. You know, 20, 30, 40 years later, you still hear about some decisions that were made generations ago that we're still talking about. And so, again, that's, you know, just speaks to the care and the planning and the thoughtfulness which, you know, infrastructure requires in order to meet, you know, because of its very nature, in order to meet those needs.
So, when you talk about those numbers, when I think about like streets or gas lines, are those all kind of rolled into that too? Because I have a hard time like thinking about how we value those, especially because they do depreciate, but they are public spaces, but those are all in there?
Yes.
I do. A question. So, when we're applying for loans or getting bonds issued, is, are these assets kind of balanced against those? Kind of, I'm thinking like when you get a loan on refinancing your house. You get a better, better rate because you have equity in your house.
Correct.
So is this a way of looking at, this is equity in our city that can be used?
It's certainly looked at in terms of the balance sheet. You know, it's, we reported on the assets and liabilities of the city. It's in the financial report we do every year. The rating agencies certainly look at that as they run it through their various filters and criteria. That certainly counts in there. One of the things they do look at, you know, are your, is the value of your assets increasing, which shows that you're reinvesting in those? If you see the value of those assets over time decreasing year after year after year, is an indication you're not making the investments that you need to make. And we, ours do show an increase every year, at least in the past few years, the trend has been upward as we've been adding more and more to our CIP and to our capital assets. I don't know, Kevin, if you wanted to add anything?
No, that's a good description.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So the next slide is just a quick summary, the next two slides of our current CIP, and we just wanted to remind you all of the funding sources. This is the revenue side. So we do have a significant amount of cash, including a transfer from CFP contingency, which city council allocated at year-end of 2.2 million. And then the largest number there, of course, is the debt issuance of the bonds. So over five years, right now, the CIP as planned, that was just adopted in the spring, is $113 million on the revenue side. And then it's also $113 million on the expenditure side, and this is the categories that the CIP are currently categorized in, such as education, economic development. You see the two items at the end, affordable housing and public housing redevelopment. And those are the two items that Mr. Murphy was talking about earlier, that gets you to the about $20 million in cash for those two items alone that should be considered as part of the bigger picture when you're looking at affordable housing and what those plans might be. So that's just a quick refresher.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
So, I know we'll have this conversation more in depth. Just looking, I'm on page, slide eight. So, looking at, and I know these are new items, and again, we'll have the discussion later, but the Affordable Housing Fund, as we go, the $500,000 is from, the money from the equity package?
No.
No.
Well, that's, you're considering that part of the equity package?
Yeah.
It's just in the CIP?
Just in the CIP.
Yeah.
So, if those numbers were to flip, if essentially that $500,000 was just put into the Affordable Housing Fund, and then the three-point, roughly 3.4 million was to go to public housing redevelopment, what kind of impact would that make?
On your budget?
Yeah.
Wouldn't make any impact on the budget. It would just impact how you're prioritizing each of those programs.
Right.
So, then on the budget, it wouldn't make a difference at all. Because it's all cash-funded.
Right.
But you would have, obviously, there would be different priorities if you flipped those. I would assume there would be different priorities.
Okay.
If you were to.
That's the only question I have.
Okay. So as we move forward in time, we're starting to think about the 2020 CIP and the 20, well, the 2020 to 24 CIP. You will, we will come back to the slides, so we don't need to dwell on this too long. So regarding council's priorities, we have existing CIP projects. We have affordable housing slash public housing redevelopment. I wanted to put in that slide the city schools capacity study, which was discussed last year.
Could you just remind me that there was the modernization number, and then there was a capacity number, and I'm just, what was this? Do you remember the modernization number alone? So just like, take our existing?
I don't. I looked at this old PowerPoint from December, and these are the numbers that were in there. I mean, we could get, if that's not in there, we can find that number.
Because even if we were to bring capacity, I feel like there was tens of millions of dollars for just the modernization to get our schools.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's included in the 140 or not. And then I have for others. But those two items alone are humongous. That's a technical term. So anyway, we'll come back to the slide after Chris walks you through the next few slides to talk about affordability and capacity. So, I'm going to hand this over to you. It's Matt. Be careful with it.
Leslie, was there a response to the email that I sent it this morning?
Yeah, we sent it at four, it was a little late. We sent it at 4:45.
Yeah, it came in late.
But it's in everybody's email boxes.
But no one's been able to see it. I certainly haven't been able to see anything. And there were like eight attachments.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it was a lot of information.
So, I don't even, I don't consider myself informed about it.
Understood.
Yeah. I saw it, it was like, it just, I was about to leave, and it's, oh my gosh.
Yeah. I mean, it's a lot of information we had to compile, but.
I appreciate it, but it's just, can't digest it.
So, in looking at the city's current debt portfolio, we currently have about $131 million of outstanding debt. 85.2 million of that are general obligation bonds. The balance, the approximately 45 million, is backed by utility rates for water, wastewater, gas, and stormwater. So when we talk about the 85.2 million, that's the portion which is paid for by taxes. Real estate tax, sales tax, meals tax, paid out of the general fund each year, and that's the number.
I'm sorry, which number is that?
The 85.2 million.
Thanks.
And then the balance is utility-related debt paid for by utility rates. As you all know, the city has established a debt policy guideline of maintaining a debt service to operating expenditure ratio of below a ceiling of 10% with a goal of 9%. And it's that 85.2 million number, that's the number that we work off of to do those calculations, being the tax-supported element of that. The utility debt does count in terms of our debt portfolio, but for that particular metric, we just look at the general obligation piece of that. And so, you know, why is this, you know, policy important? For the rating agencies, and I think I've shared these with you before, you know, when you look at the write-ups from Moody's and Standard and Poor's, they talk about a couple of things. You know, having those policies in place, first and foremost, speaks to governance and management, that you have the policies in place, that they are appropriate for a AAA-rated entity, and that we follow those policies. They're not just things on a piece of paper that we pay lip service to. We follow those, not just, you know, this council, but previous councils as well, that there's a history and institutional tradition of having strong financial policies and following those. They also talk about manageable debt loads. That speaks to how much debt we have outstanding, different debt ratios, not only the 9%, but debt per capita, some of those sorts of things. And then finally, they also talk about financial flexibility. I think you've heard me say this before, you know, when we sit down and do the budget every year, the first expenditure that we account for is debt service. When we issue debt, we're pledging the city's full faith and credit, and what that means is, that is the first bill that we will pay. And if we do not have the ability to pay for it, we will raise taxes to do that. It's non-negotiable. And so, obviously, it's a fixed cost going into every budget, and so, you know, they like to look at that and say, how much additional flexibility do you have? Is your debt so overly burdensome that you aren't able to do, not just other policy choices, but in terms of something happens, in terms of a rainy day fund or a contingency, how much flexibility do you really have? And those are the sort of things that the rangers are looking at and assessing the financial health, and to the investors, the risk of investing in the city. And I'd ask Kevin if you wanted to add anything in terms of, from your perspective.
Yeah, I think you've heard us talk about this for years, that that ratio used to be 8%, and we've thoughtfully had discussions with the rating agencies, with council over the years. We strengthened some of our reserve policies, and we've gradually walked that number up to the goal of 9 and the ceiling of 10, and communicated that to the rating agencies. And that's, that's really an industry standard. Anything, you know, above 10%, it will raise eyebrows, it will generate a lot of questions. So, I think that's a very important policy that we have established and communicated to them.
That was my next question, so thank you.
So, does that mean that we, to get, to get money, we inform people that we wouldn't go above 10%? Is that, was that part, was that the discussion?
Well, we, as part of our, you know, rating process and the discussions with the rating agencies, we communicated with them all along that we were considering the policy change and that we made the policy change, and that that's, you know, according to our projections and forward-thinking, those are the ratios that we want to stay within.
But it's not a, it's not contracted that way? Like, we didn't receive money and say that we would only be at 9%, 10%?
Right.
If I can, Kevin. I think the way to think about this is that, not that we're getting money necessarily, but that by maintaining AAA bond rating, that it's sort of the difference between if you've got great credit as an individual person, and you get a mortgage at 4% instead of 6.5%. And so, we're AAA, and we get the very best rates on the market, and so whenever we put out.
we, to get, to get money, we inform people that we wouldn't go above 10%? Is that, was that part, was that the discussion?
Well, we, as part of our, you know, rating process and the discussions with the rating agencies, we communicated with them all along that we were considering the policy change and that we made the policy change. And that that's, you know, according to our projections and forward thinking, those are the ratios that we want to stay within.
But it's not a, it's not contracted that way. Like, we didn't receive money and say that we would only be at 9%, 10%?
Right.
If I can, Kevin, I think the way to think about this is that not that we're getting money necessarily, but that by maintaining AAA bond rating, that it's sort of the difference between if you've got great credit as an individual person and you get a mortgage at 4% instead of 6.5%. And so we're AAA and we get the very best rates on the market. And so whenever we put out the bond, like we've talked about, the bond for however many million, we get those best rates below anything that you would as an individual.
I have a question, Mr. Gump. How would this work if we were to, so let's just say, for example, if the housing authority wanted to float a bond, and we know that they don't have the capacity to be able to do so right now, could the city partner with them and for us to get, for, excuse me, for the housing authority to get the same low rate that the city gets?
Are you suggesting that the, the house, that the city somehow backs?
Backs the housing authority.
Backs the housing authority?
Yeah.
So we put that question to our bond counsel to find out just what legally can we do and how that relationship might work? And we're still, they've sent us a draft of that and we're still working through that. So we've posed that question to figure out, you know, from a legal perspective, what we can do. And then in a few slides here, we'll show some examples, some scenarios of issuing, you know, a $30 million bond, a $50 million bond, what that looks like to the city if we were doing it, what that would look like in terms of our debt service and some of these ratios.
Yeah, I would be interested in knowing if, for example, we were to partner with the housing authority and the housing authority were to say, well, you know, this number of 40 million or whatever the case may be in regards to redevelopment, if they were to say, well, we're willing to bring some money to the table, we could bring a million dollars to the table or something of that nature. Right? The impact that that would have and how we could actually bring that to fruition.
I'd like to echo Council of Bellamy. I really would like to know how we could back the authority's ability to float their own bonds. They may not get the same exact good rates as ours, but they could at least float bonds and get, get someone to accept them. Because right now, I don't think they have that capacity.
Yeah. And so I'll speak generally to that. I mean, what you're looking for is when the entity that's going out to, you know, borrow money, they're looking for a defined acceptable revenue stream, as if you went to the bank, a proven revenue stream. If you don't have that, then you are asking for somebody, you know, to co-sign the loan.
Right.
When you co-sign the loan, you know, you're, the city, if they co-sign the loan, they're responsible for the debt if it isn't paid. So in that situation, it counts against your ratios. As Chris, you know, said in the first point there, the reason we're able to, you know, in essence, not count, you know, $46 million worth of debt on the utility side, because you have that proven revenue stream.
Right.
As you go through and think about new projects, one of the first things to think about, is there a revenue stream, you know, that comes along with it, or does it not? And if it doesn't come with it, then it's, you know, in your bucket of general fund-supported projects.
Right. That makes, are the mics on?
Yeah.
That makes absolute sense to me in regards to dedicated revenue stream. So I know we had discussed before, looking at different, whether that's new development throughout the city and possibly thinking about that for revenue streams, the flow bonds, or whatever the case may be. I would, I just think it's time for us to start having a more in-depth conversation revolving around the issuing of the bond for the housing authority, which I know that you all are, you know, looking at intensely. But I'm, I'm even willing to think that this may require a special session, a special budget session between my colleagues and then my colleagues on the housing authority board, maybe community members, to figure out just how realistic this is, and then what's the tangible plan moving forwards. I think there are a few of us who have different ideas, but until we all talk together, it's all kind of just like those conversations are happening in silos.
But even with what you, like dedicating a revenue stream, if it doesn't already exist, then you are talking about it's money that's going to be pulled from somewhere else.
Correct.
And then you're waiting for, if it doesn't exist, you have to create it and wait on that process.
To materialize and whatnot, bless you.
Money is being pulled from, is already being dedicated to another source, so that's, I mean, I think that's part of what, how things have been spinning with this process for so long.
To just follow up on that, I would really endorse having a separate work session on that. And it gives us time to look at the documents that we just received tonight. But also, if there's any possibility that in the redevelopment, the housing authority can create a revenue stream, be it with mixed use, how their rental income, because I think ultimately, we want to see an independent
Right.
housing authority, not one that's always coming to the council for revenue, but they actually get to the point where they're generating their own revenue. I mean, and I, that's how I've been thinking.
So I think you'll see in the documents that we sent over this afternoon,
But can I just say?
Plans in regards to that? Huh?
A dedicated revenue stream, if the housing authority doesn't create it, then it's still going to be backed by the city.
I think it's reasonable to say, right, that any initial redevelopment of the housing authority won't have that revenue stream, right?
Right.
They have their 376 units. Until they have more than 376 units to draw revenue from, or, you know, develop properties for other mixed uses, it's unlikely that they have that revenue to bring to the table. As both Kevin and Chris said, right, you know, the first bill you pay is the debt. And so it's the city's debt, at least for any initial redevelopment, if that's what council would endorse. I think that what would be really instructive, if you have a separate work section about the housing authority, is right now, what has been assumed is basically 100% of construction costs would be from the city coffers, right? Whereas almost every project that's ever been funded in the affordable housing realm has lots of leverage in it, right? So for example, you all have had like Friendship Court, which is ballpark of like a $70 million redevelopment. They want six or seven million dollars from the city. That's 10%, right? That's not the sort of ratios we're talking about
Right.
with the housing authority. We don't know, like, what the success of a Lytech, a low-income housing tax credit application may be. There's all sorts of variables that may change what that bonded amount might be.
Can be, right.
And maybe the question is, what's the first project? How much would it cost? Would it generate any revenue? And then you start talking about what are these partnership arrangements? How does the housing authority have any ability to be part of being the guarantor?
Right. And again, you'll see, you'll see in the documents today, kind of the idea for the first project. But I think, I just want to make sure it's on the record that I think we, at the very minimum, because of the history of our community and things that have transpired, we owe that much to our public housing residents.
I just would like to kind of follow up on, on Mr. Murphy's comment, though, because the crossings, as I understand, had something like 11 to 12 different funding sources to pull off that project. And that was initially funded by the city as well. But eventually, even with that, there was additional items that they were using to leverage different pieces.
But I think the crossing, you're talking about an agency outside of the city who had that background to be able to pull in.
And it's the same, even they had multiple funding sources.
But they had a history of obtaining multiple funding sources for their projects.
All I'm saying is that I'm, I'm hoping the housing authority is also looking at different grants and submit everything else to do work with.
Yes, and I hope they are too, but also with the organization that the city contracted with to get the crossings done, that they, this is, that's what they did. That was their specialty, right? So we're, I don't think we'll be able to compare the housing authority to, based on where they are now.
I just hope that there is other financial mechanisms in there using.
I can say, I can say with confidence that the housing authority isn't saying, well, we're only thinking about one source and that source being the city, and the city needs to foot the entire bill. We've been talking about a variety of different ways in terms of being creative, but that's a long-term conversation, right? And in the initial onset, we have had several discussions about, okay, so what can the city's commitment be? Because when you're talking about how you bring about other resources, one thing that the National Housing Trust had, and for those who are listening, the National Housing Trust is what, is the entity that was used to build the crossing. One thing that they had was leverage from knowing that there was financial support from the city.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we would have to know the same thing.
Oh, we definitely put skin in the game.
So National Housing Trust is with P A J.
What did I say?
National Housing Trust is at Friendship Court, just for clarification. Virginia Supportive Housing out of Virginia.
Virginia Supportive Housing. It's too many freaking housing trusts, supportive housing is too many. Yes, Virginia Supportive Housing with Orlando, sorry. But yeah, so I think the housing authority, I mean, so when we're going and talking to other donors, foundations, and so forth, they do want to know, I mean, even in early conversations we've had, they want to know, well, is your city going to support, or what kind of resources are you all bringing to the table? Everybody wants someone else to kind of be the first to show their commitment. And we, the housing authority, I mean, we desperately need the city to do the same. But irregardless, even if the city didn't, we're chugging along, it's just going to be a whole lot slower.
Wes, it is.
Thank you.
You're going to be just chugging, right?
Agreed. So we need this, we need this help.
All right.
You're going to be just chugging.
So the CIP that you currently have adopted, the five-year plan, starting this year, FY19, already looks to add about 75 million dollars in additional debt over the next five years. We'll be retiring debt at the same time, but not at that rate. And within that CIP and that projected debt amount, we're looking at annual debt service increases of more than $700,000 per year. We're projecting that we're going to be within our policies, but by the fifth year, we're getting very close to some of those limits.
You mean the 10%?
Actually, I believe it's the 9%, the 9% target. And that, you know, we're already starting to show that to stay within that 9%, some pretty significant decreases in the out years in that fifth year in 2023. And, you know, that includes some very large project commitments, which I'll highlight here on the next slide. But suffice to say, if nothing in that five-year plan changes, if that's still, we still want to build that going forward into the next CIP that we're coming up on, as Mr. Murphy said, it's going to require some prioritization in terms of projects, both new ones, existing ones as well, in terms of their timing, their scope. And then on the revenue side, significant discussions about revenue increases, specifically taxes, to either support the debt or support additional cash going into it. So all things being equal, to keep the CIP that we have, which, you know, does a variety of things in terms of maintaining our existing assets, enhancing the level of service of some existing assets, as well as some new projects. If we keep those relatively unchanged, we're still going to face some significant choices to be made. And again, as we talked about, that's the guidance that we're looking for tonight in general. Just as a reminder, some of the large projects that are in the next five years, and the totals you see here are the five-year totals, and these are a mix of cash and bonds. Some of these we touched upon already. I'm not going to go through it in a lot of detail, but affordable housing, 19.5 million dollars, the General District Court, the city's contribution, 6.4 million. Parking structure, approximately $10 million. West Main Street, 10 and a quarter million. And then schools projects, 15.1 million. And again, these are all over the next five years. So these are already built into the CIP that's currently in effect.
So this West Main Street, does that include the 5 million from UVA, or would it be 15 without their contribution?
This plan doesn't include any.
These are our dollars.
This is just the city.
Yeah, this is just the city.
And so things like the, the revenue sharing we can get from the state on some of these projects, or the potential.
We've gotten 2.8 million dollars in state revenue sharing funds for this project.
Or the money from UVA, that's not part of that.
So this is, just like what Wes was saying, this is showing our locality's skin in the game.
Correct.
So we've gotten state revenue sharing money of 2.8 million. You've gotten 5 million from UVA, and they've made a smart scale application that was submitted August 1. I don't know exactly how much the, that is. I think it's getting, that must, might be close to 8 million. I don't know if Alex Kafan is here? How much? 12.1 million. So it's, it's showing that we're a fraction of a bigger project, but we're getting very positive feedback so far from the Commonwealth Transportation Board. So it's a very significant project for the state.
And so we take that current CIP and you put it, you project it out, looking at the numbers, looking at some of the the debt ratio, as well as the general fund transfer, and I hope this looks familiar, I think we walk you through this pretty much every year as we go through the CIP process. This is the current CIP in the next five years. And so just to sort of orient you a little bit, this column on the far left of fiscal year actually looks back a few fiscal years, as well as forward. So here we are in 2019, it's about in the middle of the chart here. And what we're projecting out for this fiscal year?
Could I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
So this affordable housing, do we have the breakdown with this 19.5 million dollars, where it's going?
Where it goes.
Is it the CAF for the next?
It's, it's decided each year. It's the 3.4, like 3.5 million every year to the affordable housing. So the HAC administers makes a recommendation to you every year, and then a half a million every year to the housing authority. So that's why it's coming in just under 20 million. So none of that's programmed out in those out years, what, what the Affordable Housing Fund is going to go to. That's a year at a time.
For, for CAF over the five years, it's just a little bit shy of 17 million. And for the public housing redevelopment, it's about 2.5 million. So that gets you to your 19.5 for that five-year period.
So 19 million is five years, over five years, not per?
That's correct.
Correct.
All of these.
All, yeah, all those numbers are the cumulative five-year totals.
So the other affordable housing projects that we contribute to, where are they at? Where is that money listed?
They come out of the 3.4 each year, as recommended to the council. So like this year, you did the, the new project at Carlton Views. You instituted the 900,000 for the vouchers. In the past, a lot of that money has gone to Habitat, AIP, et cetera.
This is part of what I was asking earlier, like if those numbers were reversed, how we normally put 3.4 million to that, into different projects? If that money were to go to the housing authority, and then the 500,000 that normally goes to the housing authority, goes to the HAC?
I don't want to go too deep about setting your priorities for you. I would just say that that's what we're talking about with, you know, you need to blend the strategies. Maybe use some of the things, you're cash funding now and bond less. And just give you a small tweak on that and say, maybe there's some amount of money that goes to the affordable housing agencies. And you have just now approved a voucher program.
Right.
And there's no good practice out there in the world that says you only give vouchers for 12 months. And so I would, it would be irresponsible for me to recommend to you, only do that for one year. You'd have to continue that. Every program that's ever been out there is at least 24 months.
And I think even all of the programs, I mean, they're, we have them because they're needed. So we would have to figure out, taking from one area, that, that already probably needs more funding than it's receiving. That's going to be a challenge, too.
Yeah, our requests certainly exceed what we have in terms of the CAF funding requests.
And so as you can see, within our current CIP, you know, we stay within the targets, both the 9% and then the 10% cap. There's no required tax increase that we're projecting to support this. We're assuming fairly moderate general fund growth of 1.5% per year. But as I mentioned, you know, you do see the annual increase from the general fund to the debt service each year in the neighborhood of about $700,000 per year. And then to stay with, you know, to keep these increases fairly steady and to stay within the targets, you see in these last few years how much that drops, starts to drop off in terms of the proposed bond issue, in terms of what we can afford to stay within these guidelines.
Sue, I have a question. So when you talk about general fund grow- So, I have a question, so when you talk about general fund growth, that's the growth that's coming because of property tax revenue and increased assessments, new projects coming online?
So, we, we kind of, so we project, yeah, we just, we do project that out, I think it's one and a half percent a year. And that's just the general fund budget, but that's one of the policies. So, if that budget goes up, then your target gets better.
So, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I mean.
You know what I'm saying? So, but that is, that's the same projections we always do is going out, which is about one and a half percent, which is about where the budgets have been unless council does something with taxes. But the average growth, I'd say, just naturally, has been about one and a half to two percent a year since the recession, since you've got.
And that, that increases our ability to, to float more bonds without changing our ratios?
Yeah, so even the way things are right now, that, that is, that's an accurate statement.
Increase of the denominator.
Okay.
Which allows us to get the numerator, increase the numerator to stay, keep that ratio the same.
And the next two scenarios just kinda play out.
And so, the next two scenarios are, kind of build off of this to, give some order of magnitude to some of the discussions surrounding a thirty million dollar issue and a fifty million dollar issue.
Twenty.
Twenty, I'm sorry. So, here we have the twenty, thank you. Twenty million being added in FY twenty twenty, which you see out here on the left. And so, for the first, first year or two, we're still within, you know, still under nine percent. In the future, we start to creep over that, get very close to the ten percent in a few years, but stay below the ten percent ceiling. But then, as you look at the required, the affordability piece, the required general fund transfer, again, you start to see these deficits showing up. This assumes where we are today, and sort of the difference between what we're contributing now and what we would have to contribute in order to make that general fund transfer every year. And this is a cumulative number, this isn't every year. But it gives you some, some idea over time that, in a few years, you're looking at about ten million dollars over the course of, you know, a four to five-year period, of having to add additional funds to that general fund transfer, which speaks to decisions within the general fund regarding expenditures, tax rates, tax revenues, those sorts of things.
Does this projection assumes that we would be funded at our current interest rate?
We do, in terms of the, of the, of the, how we actually issue the debt, we assume twenty years amortization, level of principal payments, and annual interest rate of four percent. I guess the other thing to keep in mind, you know, when we, when we look at these proposed bond issues, you know, that's based on the CIP, based on the planned projects, the year in which they're planned to occur. But we actually issue on a cash flow basis. We actually, at the beginning of every calendar year, look at what have we already spent? What do we think we're gonna spend within the next year or so? And so, the dollar amount that we actually issue might be slightly different, but we're still committed to eventually issue that much debt, because, again, that's in the adopted CIP. So, it might be that a two and a half million dollar project, we show all that debt being issued in one year, but it actually might take two fiscal years to build it, so it actually might be split over two fiscal years, in terms of actually how we fund it. But we do that on a cash flow basis, not necessarily based on this schedule. But, at the end of the day, we would still plan to issue that much at some point in time, if that makes sense.
So, if I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this, so in twenty twenty-three, if we have a twenty million dollar bond issuance in fiscal year twenty, and we don't change how much we transfer from the general fund, we will, we will begin a deficit in our debt service fund balance of a million dollars.
Correct.
So, to avoid that deficit, we're gonna have to take more money out of the, we're gonna have to transfer more money from the general fund.
Right, so you would, you would take this, this deficit of a little over a million dollars, and add that to the seven hundred twenty-four thousand. So, your total general fund transfer would be about one point seven million dollars.
So, we've gotta make sure either that our general fund is growing more than a million, and that we can transfer it without changing our programs that we currently have?
Well, it would be more than a million. It would be a million just for this and this alone.
Okay.
In terms of additional programs, growth in expenses, both personnel costs, just inflation, those sorts of things, it would be above and beyond that. This would be, you know, that additional million would be just to make that number and nothing else. And so, again, just the erosion of inflation, you would, you might, in a dollar perspective, be doing the same thing, but you're actually probably doing less.
I guess I'm just trying to get an idea if it's all possible, it may not be, that in order to avoid these deficits, I'm trying to get a sense of what our general fund growth would have to be, over and above one point five percent.
Yeah, that's a great, and that's, that's one of the key questions here. And, I mean, we're keeping all the assumptions the same, but how do you grow the general fund budget? You increase taxes. You figure out, you know, that's how, that's how it grows. And so, yeah, that's what we're not really showing here, but that's, that's definitely a part of the scenario. And as we work through the capital budget, and as we start to see kind of how, how all the policies fall into place, you know, and as we get direction from you, then we'll, we'll be able to see. Because you also have a three percent cash contribution that you have to consider, too, that goes into the capital budget. And that's three percent of the general fund budget, so as that goes up, that goes up. So, everything kinda compounds on each other as you start to make these movements into these large bonds. But yeah, that's, but we didn't wanna show a whole bunch of scenarios today, we just wanted to kinda talk through it with you all. But you're thinking, that's exactly right, what you just said.
And just as a reminder, you know, we're, again, assuming a one and a half percent annual growth in the general fund. But as Leslie mentioned, you know, that's, that's a fairly conservative number. But if you look back over the last ten years, which incorporates both the recent years of, of growth and expansion, but also the recession, that average annual amount is probably about a little over two percent. So, even though in recent years we've had larger growth, you know, as we look ahead, we also have to anticipate periods of recession as well. And not, you know, paint too rosy a picture.
Right. So, one question I have, please remind me if it's the property tax or the real estate tax. I know you mentioned that we would need to consider looking at the taxes in some capacity. Our real estate tax, is it, that's one of the lowest in the state? Because when we lowered it during the recession, we didn't bring it back up, is that it?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Cities, that, so we've usually compared, we've done a couple of different benchmarks against the first cities. And then, but even looking at all cities, and we're one of the lowest, for sure. And a lot of them did this, they went down and then went back up, if you were to look at a charge, and we have stayed flat.
But in the lodging tax, right? That was seven hundred last year projections, if just increasing it a penny, right, was that?
Show a slide later on that, let's see.
I know, I know we may get to it, but I just, just for the sake of this conversation, how much additional revenue does one cent on the real estate tax?
So, about seven hundred eighteen thousand.
For one cent on the? Right. So, if we were to say, well, we have to figure out where we're gonna bring in that additional revenue, would it be plausible if we were to raise the real estate tax one cent and then dedicate those funds straight to the bonding?
That's certainly a strategy. But again, as, as, as I think Leslie mentioned, the other piece of this is, it's not just the debt service cost. Any of the other long-term financial policies or budgetary policies that are tied to the general fund growth would also have to be increased as well to still meet those. In terms of the, the additional forty percent allocation to schools of every new dollar. So, if you generate a new, any new dollars that you generate for debt service, there's some piece that you would have to also increase it by to meet that, in terms of the general fund reserve policy of fourteen percent. Again, if you're increasing the real estate tax revenue, you're increasing the overall general fund. And so, there's a piece that you'll have to fund with that as well. So, it's, it's not just the debt service, but there's some other pieces of that as well that you would have to increase in order to maintain your financial and budgetary policies.
Is that four percent, like, the example with the school system? Does that?
Forty.
No, he said four percent. All right, so forty percent. Major. Does that include the additional funding, like, we gave them, what, two point seven additional million this year?
In the operating budget? So, typically, and we've showed you all council charts on this, it's been above forty percent. Yeah, we were pretty frequently above that number, pretty regularly for the last several years, actually.
So, if it increased, that was something we could look at, increasing on one end, if we didn't add the, there's probably spaces in the budget where if we, if it increased automatically, then where we've been contributing more, maybe save some, is that?
Well, I, yeah, we may get to the point where we don't have to add more. If, if our general fund is increasing, and that forty percent of that increased general fund might be enough to cover what they need, without additional.
But I think we have to also look at it because we've heard the complaints that just, since you brought up real estate taxes from the assessments and how they've grown over the past, you know, few years. So, we're also, we don't wanna put, you know, other citizens in binds either while, while we're looking at this, and I think having that, just figuring that out, whatever that looks like.
Yeah, in the process of funding affordable housing, we're making housing even less affordable.
I think that we'd have to look at.
Maybe.
Yeah, right.
But that's not, but not for everybody.
No, 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 right.
We do know that there's a lot of.
Certain census tracts.
Yeah. But we could get that information.
But we've gotta think about that.
I mean, it's, it's a difference between whether you can afford the taxes and not. So, I don't think that's a discussion we can have, you know, here today. But even Wes, what you're talking about, if it wasn't real estate tax, you're talking about from lodging tax, people coming in town to stay, right, for a weekend?
And that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, so that's still almost the million dollars you're talking about with real estate tax. Isn't that? And that's a different population of people that it affects, I mean, it still may be visitors, but this is, you know, making a choice to come here. I'm just saying, we need to just make sure that when we're, the public is hearing this, that they know that we're considering, hopefully, the best strategies possible.
And I, I think it's a blend of things, as Mr. Murphy's been saying. But I do think that, I, I think we do need to look at all, all the taxes. So, I'm, I'm with Councilor Bellamy on that, given the magnitude of the need.
I think what we need is some direction about, what's the size of a project that you might consider funding? That is beyond where we are in cash for our current bonded projects today. And then we can run the scenarios, because it's important to understand, it's not as simple as to say, oh, it's a penny on this. Because if there were a million dollars in new revenue on taxes, well, the first four hundred thousand dollars of that by your current policy would go to the schools. It wouldn't go to the affordable housing project. And a hundred seventy thousand dollars of it would go into cash to stay in the general fund, and then you've got other policies. So, at the end of the day, it takes many, many cents to create one cent worth of increase in that bonded side.
Or a policy change.
Or you could say that this new revenue, you're not gonna observe some of your other fiscal policies, at least with regard to the school. I would defer to Kevin on this, the other policies that are about how much cash needs to be there.
Oh, yeah, that's not negotiable.
That's part of the bond rating.
Right. Yeah, we don't wanna mess with that.
And so, we also ran the same scenario on a fifty million dollar issue in twenty twenty, and you see that number here, the sixty-five point four million. And under this scenario, you're over the ten percent within a year or so. Getting up to even over eleven percent. And again, you start to see the order of magnitude of the deficits and the additional funds that are needed every year to make those debt payments.
By, by twenty twenty-six, it's twenty-four million dollars.
And we didn't run, like I said, every scenario we could think of, but even if you spread this out, it doesn't, it just spreads the pain out. So, if you said, let's just do five million a year, it's still, it doesn't matter, because it just spreads it out and makes it, it'll eventually will hit you. And so, but we, but we think, you know, these two scenarios are kind of like, you know, the biggest hits that we could take right now. But, you know, they're probably not the likely scenarios. If you, if council says, we wanna do a big project, or we wanna give fifty million dollars for affordable housing, or whatever that project is. And so, again, we would come up with some ways to do it, that it's a blended, you know, strategy that we've just been talking about and discussing.
This is just the raw, if we had to do it right now.
This is not meant to scare anybody, but it is daunting.
It's sobering.
Yeah, it is.
I know, Mr. Murphy, you asked for, you're looking for direction. I'm assuming that will come at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, we can keep talking, and then you all kind of think it through, which you, I mean, but Mr. Murphy said it exactly right. If we wanna start building a CIP that is gonna be supported by council, then these are large projects that we've never considered before, and so having some direction on how we pursue this would be very helpful, especially when we're gonna start looking at what departments want, which we're not even talking about right now. It's a whole other thing that we need to talk about at some point. And we're in the middle of that right now, so we're not ready to talk about that yet. But, you know, we can be ready to talk about that when we come back to you later this fall, so.
Okay, thank you.
Although, I just wanna throw out there, I'm not sure how we can just throw out a number when we don't have an updated modernization and capacity number from the schools. We don't have an exact number of a, of a first project of the Housing Authority. And right now, the only one I know coming out of the gate will be that six million dollar ask at some point from Friendship, for Friendship Court. So, I'm.
So, that's not even in here, the Friendship Court ask?
They made a CIP request last year, it's on the unfunded list.
But they're moving towards reality. So.
Now, that's.
Was that for phases one through three, or four?
I think, and you know, it'd be good to bring in Sunshine or somebody to talk with you all about that. As I recall, it was kind of more so PHA saying, will the city help by underwriting what they believe to be the infrastructure costs for the redevelopment? And Kathy can correct me, because she's certainly on this committee with me, but I think it was about ten percent of the total development cost.
It sounds about right, but I think at this point, too, you're right. Just like with the Housing Authority, we should have Sunshine come and give us more exact numbers to date. But that, so far, is the one that's the closest to me of a real number.
Right. You make, I mean, those points you just made are excellent, and so, I understand what you just said. But then we're gonna, a little bit later, we'll talk about some strategies, so maybe there's input you all can provide on those strategies that you're comfortable with, that then we can come back to and say, okay, this is what you told us, here's some things we're putting forward. If you don't, if you don't like these, here's some other options for you to get to whatever those numbers are. Once you start getting the, the plans that you need in order to start making these decisions. And so, and again, I don't know all the timelines of these necessarily, but, you know.
Is Grant here?
No.
I don't think so.
Do you know what the dollar now for the rich, the first project is?
The exact, no, we just have our, we just awarded our RFP last week.
You awarded it?
So, there's no estimate yet?
Oh, I thought you had them coming in.
We sent the timeline, well, I mean, I'm honestly not, like, comfortable with talking about it, probably, but we have the timeline. Here, we sent it to you all.
No, I just didn't, I thought only the RFP was out there and they were waiting for responses, I didn't think it was an awarded situation.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. The proposals were due on the thirtieth.
Okay.
And were those proposals to do the work, or was it a proposal with an estimate for the work?
Estimate for the work and to do the work, it's both, but again, all of that.
Okay.
So, just a brief summary of some of the financial impacts of issuing additional debt, and we've talked about some of these already. So, I won't belabor it too much. But the first one, every bond creates additional expense for the city. This is a variation of, you've probably heard me say this before, bonds are not a revenue source, they're a financing mechanism. They, they have to have something else backing them. As we talked about, we currently issue debt for twenty-year amortizations. And that every dollar of debt must stand up to the established long-term financial policies and budgetary policies. And as we talked about, those expenses do increase as a size of the general fund increases, to maintain those ratios, to maintain those percentages. We touched on this in the previous discussion. So, for the fifty million dollar issuance, as an example, requires approximately four million dollars in debt service in the first year, resulting in approximately eight cent tax increase to maintain both. To pay both the debt service and the existing school arrangement. The median value of a home in the city, based on this year's assessment, is two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. That adds a little more than two-hundred dollars per year to the tax bill for that median-valued home. Additionally, are there any operational costs which would be paid for out of the general fund associated with the project? And then this last point, I just want to spend a little bit of time on, because of the significant impact on the city's outstanding debt, we would be going from eighty-five million dollars in outstanding debt to now well over a hundred, more like a hundred and thirty million. That's going to raise a lot of questions from the radio agencies, a lot of questions from the public, especially then if you're, you know, a tax increase of that order of magnitude goes along with it. It's going to seriously test our financial policies. Mr. Roddy and I have had some discussions of, you know, when we go to New York and this would require a trip. You know, typically with the radio agencies, we do just a conference call. Every few years, we invite them here just to take a tour of the community and show them in person some of the things that are happening. For something like this, you go to them. And so what does that presentation look like? What... How do we have that discussion? And it's really about then sharing with them, not just the dollars and cents of the project, it's the vision, the strategy. Why this project? Why this amount? Why now? Why this level of investment? What's the plan? And when I think about that, I think about... It's a bit of a... It's not a great comparison because we don't have to do this. But, for example, Alamo County, when they go to issue general obligation, they have to go... They have to do a bond referendum to the voters. And if you look at the county's website for the 2016 school bond referendum which passed, there's a whole host of FAQs and descriptions of the projects. And what exactly are voters being asked to approve? What happens to the property tax increase? In my opinion, I would suggest that's... Those are the kinds of things that you would want to see in that plan. What... Again, and that's not just for the radio agency's benefit, it's for the public's as well, and as well as yours, to know, with this level of investment, what do we get out of that? You know, we've... In some ways, we've done that needs analysis. You know, we know the number of existing units. We know the number that are needed in the short term and the long term. How much does this buy down, or how far does it get us in that strategy? You know, that's the sort of information that I'm sure you all would want to see as well. And so, again, that plan is a critical piece of it for all parties involved to understand, not just the dollars and cents, but also the scope, the magnitude, the strategy behind that as well. Kevin, I'm not sure if you want to build on that.
No, that's a good explanation.
So pursuing a referendum, that was just a decision the county made to do that, to get that input?
The county has to do that.
Oh, we don't have to do it.
They have to do that.
Cities don't have to.
Right, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a bit... It's not a... That piece of it is not a good comparison. But again, if you go look at that website, and you see the kind of information that they were putting out in terms of its readability, in terms of what are its impacts on the community, on me individually as a taxpayer, me as a parent, you know, which schools are getting, you know, are getting projects. I believe something twenty-five of the twenty-six county schools had some project associated with it, and spelled that out in great detail. And again, I would offer, that's the sort of information we would want to have. And so with that, I will turn it back over to Leslie.
Okay. So I'll just go through a few more slides, and then we can have more of a discussion about next steps. So we've actually already talked about every single one of these points. So we talked about that bonds aren't revenue, you have to find a way to pay for them. And we talked about the tax rates, and there's a chart on the next page that shows the penny or the percentage increase for each of those. We've actually talked about private sector, how do you leverage other funding sources?
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Because there was always the P3 ordinance that I know Chris Engel's talking about, about getting the public-private partnership to build the parking garages? Is Chris here?
Yes, he is.
So weren't we at some point talking about doing public-private partnerships on parking garages?
We have talked about it. The council has not passed the ordinance, so we have to pass the ordinance to allow that. And then once that's in place, we could receive proposals from the private sector, partner with us on schools, parking garage, anything of the public nature, the city decides it.
So why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we pass the ordinance?
Certainly can do it, as we've talked about. It's early, three quarters after the Attorney's Office.
And when you have a public-private partnership, does it wind up being that the private piece owns the facility and the public piece pays rent to it? And so it's not even something that carries on the debt service ledger? Is that kind of right?
So the answer is, it can go that way. However, that would still count because that's a long-term obligation. The accounting rules and regulations around long-term government obligations is getting more and more stringent because, quite frankly, folks have been gaming the system to not report things, but they really are obligations. And so we would count those toward that.
But it could still be that a private entity puts equity into the project so that it's less that we bond?
Yeah, the spectrum can really range on those things, to complete ownership. The obvious downside there is, you know, they're running it as a business and you have no...
That's why I'm only thinking in terms of the parking garages.
Right, right. You have no rate-setting control, so it kind of depends.
Ten million for the parking garage in the courts, it's a big issue.
We've also talked about how do we... I mean, one thing you could look at also is how do you reduce the general fund to help pay for some of these? And then reprioritization of the CIP, which remember, only the first year is adopted. The next four years are just proposed, and they always usually get changed and reviewed during the process we're going through right now. So we can certainly have that as a strategy. This is... We've been talking about this. I gave you some numbers off of this. So based on the nineteen adopted budget, these are the rates to increase the major tax rates, local tax rates that we have control over. So just going back to the adopted CIP for a minute, you remember what we saw earlier, you have a hundred and thirteen million in funded projects. And we split this up into three categories, maintain, which is basically maintaining what we have, improving what we have, which kind of explains itself. You're actually improving something, improving an asset. And then new, you're creating a new asset. And then... But we almost had as much in unfunded projects, a hundred and nine million. Then there's another number, which is almost thirty-nine million of authorized but not issued projects, which means that they have been approved, they've been authorized, but the bonds have not been issued yet. We have looked at a list of those, and we'd like to come back to you with that list because we really need to sift through that and review that list. But there could be some things on there that City Council says, we don't want to do these. So we may not... Some of these may not be necessary, but we weren't quite ready to have that list for you. We need to really look through that list, and we'll be reviewing that list as we go through the CIP planning in the next couple of months. So there could be some opportunities there as well to reprogram some funding. And I'm not saying we can reprogram forty million dollars, but maybe there's a couple million out there that could be reprogrammed from that list. And that wouldn't necessarily hurt anything except that whatever that was wouldn't get done, so...
And the unfunded is identified as in need, but there's been no decision?
So basically, it was submitted by departments and it wasn't funded, right? So somebody has identified it as a need, as a priority, and it's not in the budget. And I'll go... So each of these lists kind of walks you through what those are. So this is the maintain list that's funded. So over five years, we have forty million dollars of projects that just maintain what we have currently. It's just keeping things going. It's maintenance, major maintenance, of course.
Because some could argue that some of the unfunded is major potential maintenance.
That's true, too. Yeah, absolutely. Then you have the unfunded list, which is twenty million dollars. And so, again, these are things that just... We didn't have the capacity to fund, and they weren't necessarily perhaps a high priority at the time. Not to say they're not necessary maybe, but we just can't obviously fund everything. And over time, we probably will pay for not funding these. If you don't maintain, I think as Chris alluded to earlier, then it'll get more expensive down the road for sure. This... These are the lists that are basically improvements. That's almost... It's thirty-two million dollars. And then these are the unfunded improvements of twenty million dollars, twenty-one... Twenty-one million dollars.
I'm sorry, I want to go back real quick. Does it pass to understand on the unfunded maintain, like, the risk profile of some of these? I'm not saying we have it today, but I'm just saying, is it possible for the departments just to kind of look and what...
By not funding it, what that means?
Yeah, like, I agree with your point that, you know, some assets not maintained are just going to cost us more in the long run. And so I'd like to kind of know where on that scale some of these things fall.
That's great.
Paul Obergdorfer, our Director of Public Works, has been working on that for some of their... I don't know, Paul, if you want to briefly discuss the deferred maintenance analysis that you're conducting.
Good evening. So, yeah, I can kind of clarify that a little bit. So, you know, the high value of money and the things that we don't do today, our construction cost indexes, we use an average right around thirteen percent right now for building construction rate. If you burn construction for two or three years, it will be a significant increases than doing it today. So there's always a better option, is to do it today than wait until the future and have that future value. We're in the process of taking all of our assets, different classes of assets, doing a life cycle mission assessment and doing protections. It will put us in a better position, I'm thinking strategically and with a sophisticated viewpoint of when to replace that and what those costs are.
When do you think that kind of evaluation will be something we could digest?
It's kind of ongoing. So our traffic infrastructure, we have a consultant out there doing inspection and rating all of our obsolete equipment right now. Our payment is set every three years, and the buildings, looking at having consultants come on board and update our 2017 facility condition assessment and put some value to that because there is no replacement schedule, whether it's the school side or the government side, we don't have a plan in place. So ideally, we would like to have a plan for buildings, a plan for traffic infrastructure, a plan for our equipment.
That does it. So you mentioned schools. That does include the schools, even though they're kind of separate from the cities. They... We would do the same kind of evaluation of those. Because I feel like HVAC for the schools is one of the top biggest things here, and we don't want to find ourselves without...
That's a maintenance project, actually.
And I would be remiss if I also didn't ask Lauren Hildebrand to discuss the utilities, even though a lot of our discussion tonight is around the general fund fees. You know, keep in mind, we also have about forty-six million dollars of outstanding debt on our utilities, and a lot of that is related to our pipe program for water and wastewater. Lauren, I don't know if you want to just briefly mention the asset management program you've got going on with utilities.
Yeah, we've, over the last, I guess, ten years, we have an ongoing, really aggressive program to replace and rehabilitate our existing water, wastewater, and stormwater lines. Gas lines, we also look at, but the system was pretty much replaced in the early... The late 1990s and the early 2000s, but we still evaluate that every year. But our concentration really is on... Has been in the last probably ten years on water and sewer because it had been long ignored. So we have put funds in there to replace and rehabilitate those, that infrastructure. And when we did the rate model this past year, we realized that we were pretty sufficient when it came to the water infrastructure, but we were lagging behind when it came to the sewer infrastructure. And I believe also the stormwater infrastructure would fit in that category as well. So moving forward, we're going to look at that a little more intense, evaluate a little bit more, and see whether we need to put some additional funds and whether we have the capacity to spend those funds within a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you.
So I think we talked about this slide. This is the improved... These are funded, so it's about thirty-two million. Just stop me if you have questions, I can always go back as well. And then these are unfunded, and the list that we consider improved improvement of assets of about twenty-one million. And then the last two, couple of slides, are these are new, brand-new projects. These are actually in the CIP that was adopted, and that's about forty-one point four million. And then we have a significant list of unfunded new projects. That's the biggest number, sixty-six million. So we... While we have a large CIP, the unfunded portion is just as big over five years. So we have a lot of decisions to make each year, just the way things stand right now. And again, we don't know what departments are going to submit, but they'll... It'll be a large list, we anticipate. That'll be coming in at the end of this month. So I talked to... I'm sorry, yes, sir?
Oh, no, just looking at it, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but a good bit of these are like Parks and Rec requests?
Which list are you looking at, the unfunded new?
I'm looking at... I'm looking at the same one.
Okay.
New assets or services unfunded requests. Like the Washington Park Rec Center expansion, and Tomsley Park Master Plan. But Parks Master Plan. So how do we... How do we decide on these? I mean, I know we've done it in years past. The unfunded requests, is there a different method that we want to use this year? I mean, especially with the council?
So we'll see what folks submit. And then I walked through earlier the criteria that we've put in place, which hopefully will give us some better guidelines, and will hopefully provide that explanation. And again, I mean, these are... Again, these criteria aren't, you know, hard and fast. They're just... They're really just guidelines to help us shape what these priorities would be. And then considering also what you all are going to say to us tonight and the next few months, we'll also take that into consideration, of course. So hopefully, I hope this new process helps us reframe how we look at the CIP. Not that we can afford to do any more necessarily, and we've already talked about this, unless we make some major decisions going forward. But looking at the priorities a little bit differently, I think will be helpful, so...
I just want to also say that the Friendship Court infrastructure is actually an affordable housing strategy. Because when we were looking at the Partners for Economic Solutions Needs Assessment, one of the big costs in affordable housing is infrastructure. So if you can assist anybody redeveloping for affordable housing, in the infrastructure piece, you're assisting in bringing, driving down the cost of the housing. So that's why... That's that six million, then, for the infrastructure for Friendship Court.
Is there a reason why it staggered? Two million every other year opposed to...
Probably the phases, because the three phases are...
It could be.
Got you.
Yeah, this is showing exactly how the requests came in. The Budget Office didn't decide on how it staggered. We took verbatim how they requested the funds.
What they requested, okay.
Correct, yeah. And, you know, is... I'm sorry, go ahead, yes, ma'am.
A situation like with PHA, they're going to have a mix of market rate, too. So do we know... So this request is not a loan. This request is just for city funds to be... Because they're going to... All right, okay.
You're saying they're going to be generating a fund?
Yeah.
So I talked a little bit about this currently, the authorized but unissued bonds of thirty-eight million. Again, we need to review this list, refine this list. We'd like to come back to you with some recommendations and have you provide some input on this. And again, I'm not suggesting this is going to be millions of dollars, but it could help maybe reprioritize, help with some reprioritization as well. So we'll be bringing that back to you at the next meeting to see if there's something on that list that we don't... That council is not... It's not a high priority anymore. So here's the slide we saw earlier, and I'm going to stop talking and let you all kind of discuss and think, and we can answer questions. But I think, hopefully, with the information, what we've shown you, provided you with some larger context as to what we've done in the past, what the future could look like, with the, you know, in terms of the large projects that we know are being discussed right now. We understand that we need... There needs to be some refinement to these numbers, obviously, as we move forward, and that will happen in the next several months. So looking, thinking about what council's appetite is and how you all would like to see the CIP shaped for the next five years would be helpful to kind of have that discussion and so that we can come back with you for some...[1771.21] would be helpful to kind of have that discussion and so that we can come back with you for some, with some more detail.
Are we going to have time for public comment? So I'm wondering, can that precede our, come before our discussion?
I would like that.
I think that's up to you all, sure.
I would like to hear from the public before we have our discussion.
Anyone?
Hi, my name is Emily Dreyfus and I'm with the Legal Aid Justice Center. Thanks for the opportunity to give a comment now. I really want to say that I think there are so many things that have been done in the past that we now have to grapple with because they weren't done right. And some of those are as recent as a West Main Streetscape that got a thirty-five million dollar bond. And now, I don't know if that ten million dollars that's in this was on that slide is an additional ten million for widening sidewalks and furniture on sidewalks? I mean, that seems like prioritization really is the name of the game right now because that ten million could go a long way toward helping people who are homeless or living in some, on someone's couch. And really, when we look at what has happened in our community, if not here, where? Because we really have to grapple with the issues. And all across the country, progressive movement is happening. And I felt like this presentation was nothing but missing that point in so many moments. I appreciated Ms. Beauregard's advice about setting priorities and finding ways to save money in what has already been decided, but might actually have some flexibility. I also think you might consider the idea of putting out a note to, or however you communicate with the staff leadership to say, this is not a year to dream big, this is a year to tighten your belts because we need to be addressing the biggest problem in our community. And we're a community that has compassion for people. And we have heard loud and clear that people want to see justice and housing justice is linked to racial justice, as we all know, and we need to take action. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm Rip Verkirke, the President of the Vanna Trails Foundation. And I want to start by acknowledging the incredibly important priorities. You all have been emphasizing, obviously, affordable housing, as we just heard so articulately, is an essential goal. And of course, the schools are also a huge piece of this program. But I do want to speak on behalf of supporting trails and greenways. I think that they serve three primary functions. The improvements in those trails and greenways would serve three primary functions. One would be to improve safety. As it is, citizens who are biking or for that matter, walking around the city are very often in circumstances where they're exposed to traffic and in danger of being run over. And there are a lot of opportunities to improve that by creating paths separated from traffic, not roads accommodations, but rather separate paths to the extent possible. The second significant concern would be that trails and greenways promote health. They're inviting people into the outdoors. They obviously benefit from being in nature, but even more than that, human powered transportation is healthy transportation. It reduces congestion, reduces needs for parking garages and maybe save you something on your ten million dollar investment in parking garage. A smaller facility might be needed. And then finally, I think an often neglected aspect of human powered transportation, alternative transportation, is that it promotes mobility across very many communities. It's often thought that it's, you know, lycra wearing bikers who benefit from bike paths. But experience in Richmond, for example, with the Capital Trail has suggested that low income communities make extensive use of bike trails, particularly separated bike trails as opposed to those along the road, on the road surface. They make extensive use of those trail networks to go shopping, to get to work, to move about the city because frankly, human powered transportation is a lot cheaper than a car. So I think for those reasons, it would be very valuable to make a substantial investment, understanding that the scale of that investment is going to be nothing like that in affordable housing or in schools. But, you know, as I was looking at some of those figures, some of the park investments, for example, three million dollars to, in one year to the McIntyre Park Master Plan or perhaps that was the, I think that was the McIntyre, no, sorry, that's Tonsler Park, I've got the two reversed. And then five million over two years to the McIntyre Park Master Plan. Those are substantial figures. They're serving good purposes certainly. But those kinds of requests, certainly, I think the benefit of greenway trails would very easily equal, in terms of overall benefits, would equal those of park improvements. Thanks very much.
Hi, I'm Eberhard Yala. I'm part of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the East High Street Streetscape Scaring Committee. And I sort of poach in and listen to a number of the other Streetscape projects on a regular basis. I'd like to follow up on what Rick said and address it and really try to pound home the point that affordability, housing affordability actually consists of two elements. One is the cost of renting or owning. And the second is the cost of actually being able to get to work, so transportation. So all the investment one makes into decent bicycle infrastructure and improvements in the pedestrian access and walkability of a city, all that actually reduces the real cost of living in a city. So those are all monies that are, will have an enormous impact on the affordability for a population in the city. It means doing a vast number of things to make bicycle transportation, public transportation or bus system and, you know, walkability more attractive for various parts of our local population. And that's a big get, you know, it's not automatic. But various studies have shown that in terms of bang for the buck for social justice, improvements in bicycle infrastructure yield the greatest multiplier effect. Richmond is an example that Rick brought up, but there are other studies in other areas. So as far as bicycling goes, I was very interested to look through this slideshow and see that there are a lot of things missing. You have to get to page twenty-two before the word bicycle even comes up. And there's the bicycle infrastructure. On page six, that lists the city assets under general government, you've got sidewalks, you've got lighting, street lighting, you have roads. Do you have anything there for bicycles? I mean, I think that's something the Budget Office needs to be very aware of, to make that a separate category. So our population also, our staff and our population become attuned to the fact that this is an integral and important part of our city's infrastructure. And it needs to be funded, whether it's through general revenue or whether it's through some sort of bond funding. So you have no mention under general government. The only other mention, or the other place where it's failed to mention, in the West Main Street project, which I happen to support because I think it does do a great deal to improve the ability of our citizens to get back and forth in that corridor and make good use of that corridor. But there's no mention, I mean, this is picking small little scabs, but there's no mention at all of that a substantial part of that is also to improve the bicycle infrastructure there, so that could be added. Wayfinding, we need to, including that's on page twenty-one. We need to make that not only for automobile wayfinding, but for pedestrian and bicycle wayfinding. I've taken up a lot of your time, but I want to refer you also to page four, to your criteria. And as far as bicycling and pedestrian friendly, improvements in pedestrian friendly infrastructure and bicycle infrastructure, your goal number two, healthy and safe city. It's pretty obvious that improvements there for both bicycling and pedestrian purposes meets that goal in a very, very high fashion. Goal three, beautiful and sustainable, natural and built environment, pretty obvious. Goal number one, affordable housing, I've addressed that already. And I think that's really, please do not cut out from all the important emphasis that has been, being put on increasing the funding going into affordable housing. Do not cut out improvements to local multimodal transportation. So people do not need to own cars in order to be able to work in the city. Goal four, does a project reduce operational costs? More people you get bicycling and walking to work, the fewer parking, parking structures you have to build or the smaller they are and the less costly they'll be, the less costs you have on maintaining streets. Bicycles do not have the same wear and tear on streets that cars do by several orders of magnitude. What's one of our other? Leverage outside funding, another goal. Or normal opportunities for leveraging outside funding for both pedestrian and for bicycle infrastructure. And city has not pursued that. City has just been relying on, what does VDOT now and the Transportation Board call the various projects, smart, smart streets, smart money?
Smart scale.
Smart scale projects. So the city has only been relying on those. You know, the improvements on Emmett Street for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure that'll only come along is that project that's funded by the state. And so we're looking at four or five years down the road before it actually fully comes into place. The East High Street Streetscape project is limited only to, you know, corner of Tenth Street and Locust. And so all the necessary improvements for the long uphill part from Free Bridge to Locust Avenue hasn't been included. So in any case, you know, I think if you are serious about what's on page four and if you're serious about improving affordable housing, do fully consider improvements and perhaps an increase in the two hundred thousand dollar per year amount in bicycle infrastructure that's posted on page twenty-one. Thank you.
Mr. Eberhard, can I, can you stay for a second? I have a, speak up, brother, I have a question for the budget team. So I think there's a great deal of validity in regards to the multimodal piece. I've been talking to a lot of people from the neighborhoods about different modes of transportation. And it's funny, like when I first came, when I didn't really care.
That's true.
But it's really important, though, there's a, there's a lot of people who either walk or bike to work. And I'm noticing in different populations.
And many more who are busing now. This summer, I've been riding the bus and I've noticed the increase in ridership on the routes I ride is quite apparent.
I mean, it's easier. So addressing his point, I know that we've discussed, or we have some money in the budget in regards to improving bike lanes a piece. But I wonder if there's a way for us to, because even like, as I like to jog, just our current bike lanes or, or like our running lanes, it's, it's really dangerous sometimes. Luckily, I haven't been hit, but I can see how someone could. So I know that's kind of adding on to an already very inflated budget. But is there somewhere we can look at these discussions to, to create a more safer way for different, or for multimodal and different means of transportation?
Well, that's what the Streets That Work is all about. And that was why we're changing the standards in the design manual based on the policy we adopted two years ago.
But we have to fund it too.
But we have to fund it. We can't, we can't just have a policy. We've got to fund it.
Yeah, because it's my understanding that the Streets That Work isn't really funded. I mean, they're funded, but it's not.
There's projects, but as, as Eberhard was saying, that we've been waiting only for smart scale funding. We've not been putting, and, and that's what, I'll just speak now, that here we have West Main Street. We're paying one-third, but two-thirds are coming from either the state smart scale or the revenue sharing. And I'm, I'm getting concerned that that's a project that's, that's being asked to be cut when that is the one that we're getting a lot of leverage out of from state funding. And it is multimodal as can be. Three hundred to four hundred people participated over a year process. It's ranked as one of the most dangerous streets in the city by Streets That Work. So that matches up with all of the criteria of why we need to invest in an infrastructure project. But, but the others that need to be done also are worthy as well. But we, we don't have them in the pipeline for smart scale. And that's what he was saying, is that we needed to.
If you have a quick question for the board, is the two hundred thousand a year on page twenty-one for bicycle infrastructure, is that in addition to what the city council approved, who was still mayor, so that was at least four, five years ago? I believe you were on council for the second year.
Yeah. Yeah, and it went to two hundred thousand.
You have vet, Kathy.
Oh, yeah.
This is in addition?
I'm weathered.
Weather the storm.
But since when? I'm sorry, when's the time?
Two thousand fourteen is when, and I thought those were general revenue funds.
I don't have those numbers in front of me, I mean.
But this is, this is a, this is a, here's.
That's in the budget right now.
It's in the budget now.
It's in the, it's in the adoption, so I can write this comment, so that's.
So this is not in addition to what city council had previously?
It's new money for each of those five years.
Right, but it's not in addition to what the city councils had appropriated.
It is what the council has appropriated, so I'm not sure what's right.
Mr. Eberhard, you're saying page twenty-one, where are you?
Line four on page twenty-one, bicycle infrastructure, so this is two hundred thousand a year.
He's looking at the unfunded names.
Twenty-two.
He's looking at the funded.
Okay, twenty-two, yeah, I'm like, are my eyes playing tricks on me?
The other page numbers are printed real small, I'm an old guy.
And then there's Trails and Greenway Development, which is unfunded in the new category, which speaks to some of the questions before. I, I certainly, this is a priority of mine and it has always been. And I'm happy to hear that it's, it's shared. And so I'm also interested in ways that we can, I mean, because as I mentioned earlier, this is talking about hundreds, a hundred thousand dollars a year more versus, this is not, this is not big dollars, but we can really achieve something meaningful with a relatively small investment and a relative scaled, relative to what we've been talking about the rest of the evening. So I just think where we can get those smaller wins that are going to really benefit the broader community, I'm absolutely there.
I will fully support it.
I am as well.
Good evening. Peter Krebs, Piedmont Environmental Council and City of Charlottesville resident.
I just had one comment because I missed most of that comment. I had to step out, sorry. But I think we also have to consider that, like currently, who is occupying and using those spaces? And if we're talking about dollars that may be taken away from one area, we have to be really mindful, mindful of that. So just want to, but thank you, go ahead.
And thank you for valuing the, the public comment enough to put it ahead of your discussion. So I'll, I'll value your respect by keeping quick. So these guys have talked about the, the many benefits of trails and greenways and sidewalks, connections for pedestrians, people with strollers, wheelchairs, using their feet to get around. It's really essential to remember that this stuff is infrastructure. It's, it's not amusement, it's how people get to work, it's how people get to school, how they get to opportunities, it's how they spend time with their families, it's how they reduce stress, which has so many cascading benefits that keep people from getting sick in the first place, although the health benefits are also well established. You guys are already familiar with the Citizens Needs Assessment and the Park and Rec Assessment. And that, those show very clearly that the citizens and residents of Charlottesville are very much in favor of better connectivity. There's another data source that's brand new. So we just connected, conducted our own survey, in fact, it closed a few days ago, with eight hundred fifty respondents. And I'm going to share the full data with the city. The city is a partner, you'll get the data, both summarized and in raw form. But a few numbers jump right off the page. So seventy-two percent said that fear of cars limit their ability to walk or bike for basic transportation. Sixty-one percent cite lack of sidewalks. And we know that that number is actually much higher in at-risk communities. Sixty-four percent said the same concern makes it harder for them to exercise. And a third said trails are either absent or hard to find in their neighborhood. These are issues that we're going to have to address. And I will also add that it's good that Charlottesville is making progress, but I think we have to move faster. The, the, the problems of, of health and equitable transportation are going to get worse, not better. And we need to step forward to move, move ahead of that. So you guys are going to have to weigh a lot of maybe seemingly competing priorities. And actually, just last week, I was in Richmond and I ran into one of my heroes, LeVar Stoney, who is the mayor of Richmond. And I, I asked him, so you know. And I, I asked him, so you know what our situation is in Charlottesville? We've got a lot of work to do in many areas. How would you sort it all out? How would you weigh it? And he said, you know what? You have to do it all. You, you can't just address a, a part of the problem. You have to give people a place to live and you need to make sure that their kid is not going to be hit by a car. It's, it's not like we can only do part of the project here. I found it interesting that you guys were talking about having a plan and how important that is for getting not only bonds, but also perhaps more favorable terms. And the more we have a complete vision of what we're trying to do as a community, the better our ability to get funding for each of those silos within our ask is going to be, you have to have a complete approach. And that's what I think you should do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ned Micky. I'll try not to take up too much of your time, but I'm here on behalf of Trails also, and I'll try to hit some different points. As, as you all probably know, I'm a attorney, one of my main areas is criminal and traffic. And I see Lloyd Snook happens to be here too. And I, I would say that I can't tell you how many people we have represented who get caught in our area driving on a suspended license. It is a really common charge in our area. No license or driving on a suspended license. There is a large group, and it's mostly our, our low wealth communities, that get stuck in a pattern of not having a license, getting suspended license because they have fines they can't pay. And they, yet they have to go to work. And, and they risk going to work in a car, and they get caught. And, and even though we represent these people all the time, and if you go to court, I mean, it's just, it comes up all the time in court, people driving on suspended, driving no license. Our immigrant community, some of them can't get licenses. And so having alternative ways to get around is really critical to these folks. And it's, and it needs to be safe. I represented somebody within last year, an immigrant who was on a moped that got hit on Preston. There was another immigrant from the Mickey Drive area who got hit out on 29, I think, crossing 29. And when we look at safe ways to travel, the best safe way to travel is on greenways. And the city has done a great job, and Parks and Rec has done a great job of buying up nice, beautiful, level stream valleys. And these stream valleys, a lot of them are, are the city owns now, and is just waiting for financing to create safe greenways that connect people to the places they need to go. Once the one is done that runs from Mickey Drive all the way to John Warner Parkway, that group of folks who live on Mickey Drive will be able to walk or ride a bike to Greenbrier School, rather than having to wait for a bus and ride through the neighborhood and however long. They'll be able to go up to the mall safely on a, on a greenway path. They'll be able to go downtown by connecting up to the John Warner Parkway and carrying on downtown. And there's other greenways around town that connect people to the places they go, they want to go, and it's just a much safer way to separate cars and pedestrians. And as, one of our problems is we have hills, and, and the greenways solve the hill problem in addition to getting, separating cars and people. And so Peter mentioned the fact that, that scientific studies in Charlottesville and in Alamo, we had a scientific study in 2005, and again, just recently, show that this, it's the number one priority of people is having bike, bikeable and trails created and cited as the number one need and the number one way that they want the city to spend their taxpayer money in the most recent survey. So this isn't a, a group of small group of people saying, this is what we need. This is a scientific survey showing that this is what the citizens of Charlottesville want. It's also something with a really long history of, of the city council action. This is a 1991 plan that was adopted by city council, Alamo supervisors and the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and it shows all kinds of improvements for bikes and pedestrians, including in the greenways. These plans have been created again in 2005 and 2015, the adopted pedestrian bike ways that are adopted by city council, and they, and so they're there. These plans are there, they're in the books. The greenways particularly have, have not been completed. We don't have any greenway that connects people to places yet. And we also have, in 2013, they adopted the Meadow Creek Valley Park Plan, city council did. That's less than half funded, less than half planned at this time. In 2017, as I say, there was this new study that, from the Parks and Rec Department. The 2013 Comprehensive Plan calls for, quote, "fully implementing" the bicycle, pedestrian and greenway plans that have been approved by city council. So that's 2013 Comprehensive Plan. And so these plans have been on the book forever, and we just need to move and, and get them done. It's what people have shown to be want, and it is absolutely a social equity thing, because there are a lot of people out there who can't afford a car, or they, their license is messed up. They can't get a license or it's suspended, and they're getting caught and arrested and their situation gets worse. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Actually, I hadn't intended to, but I wanted to, Rosanna Ben Coach, I'm actually the voter registrar, as you all know. But I wanted to pick up on something there, that was what Mr. Micky said, because the driver's license is the, is the main form of voter ID used at the polls. Voter ID is required if you vote in person, absentee, or in person, or at the polls on Election Day. And when the, when the driver's license is not available, it's, you have to come into our office to get another ID, or to go to the DMV. It can be difficult. You might have it in hand, but not know if you can use it or not. I just think it's a deterrent to people voting to have such a high number of suspended licenses. And if we can keep, if we can help people get back on the track and get their licenses back legally and not get caught driving on suspended license, I think indirectly that, that helps the voting population, that helps voter turnout. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Closing public comment. We have two minutes.
I know one thing that I would like to see is to be able to maybe set that meeting up with CRHA and PHA, that's what I heard. To, before we, do we have enough time? Like, when would we need to have that meeting to, for you all to have some feedback on direction?
I think anytime between now and November.
When do we go to the planning commission? I told December, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're a little bit later on the schedule, so there's a little bit more time on that end.
By November?
I would say, I think before Thanksgiving or maybe right after Thanksgiving, because Thanksgiving's early this year, so, yeah, I think that would be fine.
But we probably should have it sooner than later, so if we need to.
I think so. Yeah, I think that would be good, just so we, it's just more information and help, more guidance for, as we start looking at prioritizing the CIP, so.
And how about a school board lunch? Where we get more.
I think that would be good too.
More, you know, do they have a, a phasing that they could do? It's not just all 120 million at once. What is their top priority?
And I can certainly reach out to them.
I don't know what it is now.
Yeah. And I'm happy to reach out to them too, and just kind of have that discussion in the meantime as well, and we can work on getting the groups together as well. Because that typically does happen anyway, so.
I think we just express interest, I mean, I know I did after the last budget cycle of trying to engage them earlier in the process, because we all have a lot of questions that by the time we get to it, it's just like, well, it is what it is.
Right, exactly, so.
And then I, lastly, I just, if there are any flags around the things that are in this maintained category that are unfunded, that we really think are the higher risks for coming to fruition that are going to cost us a lot more, I just kind of like to know. Doesn't have to be line by line, but if there's just the top, top things, like it would just be helpful as, as we're prioritizing.
And I think that would be a fair thing to discuss as we pull in what departments are asking for, is all these things are going to show up again. And so, yeah, so it's not like they were one-shot deals. They're going to ask them for, for money for these items again. So I would anticipate that.
As long as there's a consistent process across departments for how they're kind of evaluating that, what I'm calling that risk.
And that's hopefully where the criteria will help kind of determine where some of these fall and.
And we just heard that there's certainly three of us that are interested in what we can do to support our trail system.
Well, and I, and again, I, for CIP projects, projects that have already leveraged other funding.
And that's one of the criteria as well.
Okay, so, I think it, it would be unwise to defund something that is going to be providing multimodal transportation. And I think as we're hearing, especially if you're design, if you're building, designing for pedestrians, you're also planning, building and designing for bus service. So it's pedestrians and people that take the bus, they're one and the same. And then that is, it is a very fair approach to looking at our transportation system. So I, I totally support maintaining those investments, and increasingly, Virginia Department of Transportation is awarding projects based on their multimodal characteristics. And it's, it's, it's a high value. It's, LeVar Stoney's right, you got to do it all. Equity, sustainability, viability. It's, it's hard to figure out how to tease it out and which one's not, not, not your priority. So that's a direction that, you know, we're, we're looking at, myself personally, all of these things are important, but we want to see if we can get them down into chunks that are more manageable and spaced out with combinations of other partnerships and funding But I, I'm firmly in support of the redevelopment of, of our public housing sites. And we're going to have a more robust discussion about it once we're all more informed about what's being proposed. And I, on the $6 million infrastructure for Friendship Court, the residents have really embraced a new park system, several parks on the site tied to a, a multimodal street that's very walkable, bikeable, green. Finally reconnecting that community to the rest of the community. So I think there's multiple benefits to this increased connectivity, and when you do it right, you are in allowing people to get out and walk and engage with nature. So I, I, I see that that's the goal, is to do it all at once. Housing and quality of life.
So you have to start somewhere. I'll just make that comment. And we are a very small community, so all you have to do is really walk out your door. And you are on, you have access to the, the scenic views that we're talking about. And I'm saying this as someone who's lived in, and, and still lives in the area that you all are talking about. So, and who currently, and I'll just leave it, they are who currently access these spaces, not would use them, but for individuals to come and, and the majority of the conversation is centered around black and brown bodies using these spaces, which is not what is currently happening. That's, that's a little bit problematic too, for me.
So personally, I think, Mr. Murphy, you and Ms. Bogart, you guys asked us for specifically whether or not we, there's a will for us to move forward with a bigger number, or for a special project. And Mr. Cuthbert, you said the same. Is that correct?
Oh, they want direction on that.
Yeah, you need direction for that, right? I just wanted to make sure that, like I heard that.
I wondered what that big number was.
It sounds like there's some discussions that need to happen first, but I think, I think what I've heard, I mean, you've said some very specific things that you've talked about. But it sounds like also you're very interested in how do we kind of push the boundary a little bit further in our CIP and do things that we haven't done before? And how do we get creative in making those things happen?
Correct.
Okay, I'm looking at this table too.
And I guess.
I mean, because knowing that it's, the affordability is still in question, so how do we make it affordable?
I guess I just want, as a point of clarification, is there, are there any projects or categories of projects or strategies that are not a priority, or you are less interested in than others?
Oh, less interested.
Yeah, I think if we could have that discussion with housing, and then maybe have another session or to, because I think that will, we'll know what the price tag looks like, what PHA needs are, and then we'll be able to, instead of just cutting things based on a what if, or even having the community alarmed at something that may not have to happen. Once we have those numbers, then we could.
I disagree with that. I feel like when we have the meeting with housing, we need to let them know this is kind of what we can do. Because it would be a strategy meeting. You're saying it's premature. Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I just said.
So what are you saying?
I said, he said, what is not a priority? Housing is a priority, right?
Right, so we want to direct them now to find out the number? Or how we get to the number?
They, what was your question?
So, I heard, I heard, you know, what your priorities are. Are there, is there anything that is less of a priority or a particular strategy that is, you're, you're less interested in us building into the CIP than others?
And so that's what I was answering. I don't think that we can, or I don't feel comfortable answering that until we know what this number looks like. I wouldn't want to cause alarm to the community thinking we're going to start cutting where we may not need to cut. And so once we have those numbers, it may be a more appropriate time, if there is time, which if we have this meeting fairly quickly, that we may then, after that discussion, be able to have that discussion.
So it, it's a, it's a, it's a whole lot of soup, right? You know? We've got $113 million that's in this five-year plan. Some of those things you might be willing to rethink. We have $38 million worth of projects that you've previously authorized, but they're not getting built right this minute, and you might rethink those. And, and I would just remind you that also we've got a lot of cash that's in that current CIP too. And there is this, just the matter of prioritizing and what would your will be? You know, Dr. Bellamy talked about this flip-flop arrangement, but there's probably many scenarios where you say, we've made this major contribution to affordable housing. Is there some portion of that $3.4 million that isn't in an annual competitive process the way that we've looked at it at HAC, but we're dedicating now, all of the sudden, for this next five years because we have said that the priority is that great on affordable housing? So, and a particular kind of affordable housing, not a competitive process. So all of those things are in the mix. We need to have that conversation with you all, CRHA and PHA together. I, I think we have enough direction, and you have, understand that there are many moving parts about how we might get there. And, and the understanding also that borrowing $50 million, there aren't any scenarios where we do that within our debt limits right now and our cash limits. And so it has to be a combination of factors if we're talking big numbers.
Right. But specifically, I mean, I know you're saying it, but I just want to be clear, when we do have that housing meeting, one thing I'm very interested in is figuring out what strategies we can use to do the $50 million for public housing redevelopment.
And I'm saying, we may not have that by the time you have this housing meeting, I mean, depending on when that happens. And so, I mean, we could, because we won't have, the CIP process will still be happening, the department, we don't have anything from departments yet, assuming that that'll happen in the next month, for instance.
No, so if that meeting was in like November?
Oh, sure, by November, yeah. I mean, that's when we were going to come back to you anyway, sometime in November. So, but I don't know if you want to wait that long, because there's information you all need now that would help inform it, whether or not we can tell them we can do a $50 million bond. Now, I know you're interested in the Housing Authority aspects of this that we talked about earlier in the session, and we're pulling that together. We'll have, we can send that to you. That, we can send to you, the information you asked for earlier.
There's also no reason why we only have to have one meeting for the Thousand Authority. Like, we could have one sooner now, and then we can have another after the numbers come back.
Well, and the other thing that we need to be careful of, and I think Chris talked about it very well, we need to make sure that we've we need to make sure that we've got the, the story down that we're telling our community. What is the rationale for this? Because we don't have to do a referendum, doesn't mean that we don't have to be very accountable to our public and get the, get the message out, why this is important, what is it doing? And, and so, we need time for that. And, you know, I'm, I'm seeing, you know, the twenty-million-dollar bond, additional bond issuance, I do see that we're in striking distance of being able to do that, if that helps you at all. And I think we're going to have these serious about looking at stuff like that. But the fifty million dollars seems to be getting way over our capacity. And is there some sweet spot in between? Can we all come to the middle about how do we phase these things? How do we time it so that we can keep an, uh, the right flow of our bond issuance and our debt service so that we're not crashing the whole system and losing our bond rate? Because then we can't do anything for anybody.
Yeah, but we, we have to be able to have that entire conversation with a variety of different scenarios so that we truly know that. Like, right now, even as you described it, it's kind of like a hypothetical. There's nothing-
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to be fair.
No, I understand, you're, you're trying to be fair, but, and I'm, and I'm thinking, from my perspective, I want to be fair as well, because historically, we haven't done enough in regards to addressing this affordable housing issue, nor dealing with the equity issues. Now, we've done a lot more lately, but we're still thinking about pushing the envelope. So, I would just love to hear a variety of different scenarios and how we push the envelope, being aggressive, um, from a moderate perspective, from a conservative perspective. And I don't mean political parties, I just mean, and approaches. So, I think we need to discuss all of those things or have all of those items in front of us when we have these discussions, opposed to, um, thinking, wow, what we maybe think may be aggressive, there could be even more that we could do. We have to have the conversation.
I'm just signaling from my perspective that we are, I'm willing to do more than what we're currently doing.
That's good, too.
Okay, but whether or not that's fifty million dollars or not is another story. I need to see it. And I need to see that there's a lot of other, you know, partners in the game. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. This is a lot of good work. Thank you very much.